City Council, roll call, Councilman Werner.
Here.
Councilman Gleason. Councilwoman Leonard. Vice Mayor Lingowski, absent. Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
City roll call. Secretary of Jivers. Vice President Beard, absent. President Massey. Thank you. We have a forum.
So this item I added to the agenda just to kind of have a simple discussion. The previous, the manager mentioned that we would possibly be able to use the park location as the fourth best celebration for 2020. It also will include the 10 year anniversary celebration for the city. So we are, we're hoping that the park will be in a good place for us to host it.
I think the park should be good. But do I, we should be good. Some will get some rain, but the grass is coming up fine. The only thing I would say is that here at this location, until we get phase two done, where we need the road down, where we can fill these out for the dinner truck. Having it here, you do have the hardware here and you do have access to some power. I think you run some power cross, but outside of that, I think the facility will be fine. We can grow off where it's hard. We can have sex set aside for the food vendors. We're just gonna have to grow off the deal.
Which is what they currently, they currently do now.
I understand you lost when you said that. Section.
We, we, for this item, we're just talking about having it at the park and how it's planned.
The, the, the old location is kind of out. They know we lost it for our, our, our.
We, we changed the location due to the, it's the extra interest in the location.
Well, that actually enters, but still exists in Java, correct?
Which is why I'm trying to get.
I'll take that. Wonderful. Any other comments or suggestions on this?
Yeah. The 50th birthday is coming around. So we need to add that into the celebration.
I think we're celebrating it all. We're celebrating America's freedom. Celebrating your 25th birthday, we're celebrating attending the city.
Right.
All in saying, all encompassing.
And so at the time, we're in, in the process trying to get insurance, things of that nature, booking some of the vendors. And so we need to confirm the location to start preparing for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Your four effects? Okay, moving forward. We have before us a park campaign, phase one and two. We've got that in the city. Right. Yeah.
So for the record, around the 50th year for some of the district. So as you recall, the kind of last joint meeting that we had, we kind of, you know, had that concept plan that, you know, has been talked about over the last couple of years and basically saying, hey, the next stage we want to do is phase two. Just a little bit of the history of phase one is the stuff that was going on in the past, you know, I'd say maybe a year and a half of just leveling out the field, getting stuff ready for the future phases. Some utility expansion, that sort of stuff. So phase two, basically is that part that we were talking about. I don't know. I know I did know some stuff over previously, but I also, if not, I have something I can kind of just pass around. If you want to bring it up, but so if you guys can see it, I'll turn it on to the crowd to see. So basically the entirety of the pink and the yellow was, you know, the entirety of the park that we, you know, all took a look at previously. And phase two, which was, spoke at the last joint meeting, it's that area in the yellow that I've shown here. And what that is basically just to kind of get the infrastructure, the parking and that type of stuff done, that finishes the entrances and gets everything ready for the future phase, the future phase or phases of what we have, which would be that entirety of the park. That would be, you know, finishing an actual, you know, field turf for the fields, parking lot, basketball court, football court, whatever is kind of decided. So, you know, since that last meeting that we all had, we, you know, kind of said, hey, let's, let's kind of start moving forward. Looking ahead to finalize in that phase two. So what we've done since we had that meeting, it's two guys kind of gave us a direction. We've created a set of plans that, you know, I think we'll kind of have discussion here. Working in from the fourth, from budgeting and that kind of stuff, how, you know, the next steps of that. So we've done basically the plans that are ready for that phase two, which is that whole plan set. But I know, you know, we kind of have to work on the timing for funding and, and, and the scheduling. We don't want construction going on, obviously, for that four days. So, you know, obviously I'm here to kind of answer any questions I did. You know, kind of previously sent out a, just a cost estimate of what we have. We have two separate soft estimates that we have. One is basically just kind of more bare bone, I guess you could say, from the stuff of all those, everything that showed here in, in the yellow. And then we have kind of a, you know, what our recommendation would be. The only reason we provided those two is just because there is a difference in, in cost. So the first one that we said, it came out to about like 1.25 million.
How long ago was this set? I don't think I seen it.
I don't, you know.
Is that copied on?
I don't know, Lynn. I remember this.
No, let's see, some of the team.
It would be real.
Yeah, it was a week.
Jackson, when you were sitting here, he was saying to me all the time, really. You know, we were sitting.
I don't see.
No, but so just.
I watched my city mail.
He brought it to you.
Yeah, so, so I do have, I do have a printout that I can. Okay, but I, what I want to do is, you know, just kind of specify from the face, these stuff, there's some stuff that we did, you know, a while ago. It's still kind of encompassing of everything. But, you know, we got bids and all that stuff on lighting and, and, you know, fields and stuff like that. So those, you know, that, there probably will be some sticker shocks that happen. That's not something that we're doing. Kind of including in this first phase. So I'll kind of scan that one out. After the fact, but I do have kind of what I was saying is, I don't want to call it bare bones because we can basically include almost everything, but I have the two separate estimates. One is basically our recommendation for all the, you know, getting all the utility, getting all the stuff that's in place so that when we do do future phases of the park, we're not tearing up any of the parking lot or anything. So I'll kind of send them out. For your policy now, I apologize. I haven't seen how many copies I do have. I think I have about seven pages. So it's about $225,000.
So what's the total price for one you recommend?
So the one I recommend is 1.4, 1.45.
That's always well known.
Is that the full development of that thing?
No, that's the full development of the yellow one, barely the park.
Just some entry. It's two, it's two hundred, it was a double $200,000 approximately. Without moving up to our bid. But one is the asphalt around about everything minus, minus the rest of the utility. If we're gonna be doing that, the one that we found for $200,000 more is what, it's not quite on the plan. And we have everything done, that would be one, two, three, four, five. Because if not, that 200,000 difference will be more than that. If we come back home, then we're gonna have to repair that asphalt. We're gonna have to call again, so.
The fact, the fact of the matter is, funds are not existent for any of the services. Line item, you know, on our appropriation last year. Very solid hopes for appropriations. This year, we don't have a totally bad. We'll have a good idea, have a feeling strongly that makes us a good test. This program will have solid. Yeah, being sad, a little premature after you started.
Doing it. Oh, absolutely. Now, we're not even loving it.
Yeah, and that, that's kind of the purpose, I think, you know, of this meeting also too is, you know, hey, okay, this is what we want to do for what it's gonna cost. So what we did from there, we, you know, kind of created that whole plan set. So you'll see the difference is about $225,000. Our recommendation is to do the, the full utility one, just kind of the main differences of that in two plans. And because there's going to be events, there's going to be stuff like that. That phase, instead of not including and installing the fire hydrants and the water mains and that type of stuff. You know, we'd be tearing up parking lot or potential tearing up parking lot. For that second phase, includes all the fire hydrants and that sort of type of stuff. So if there is any type of events or anything, and there's, you know, got to bid a fire, you know, we do have the fire protection and all the water mains. And sewer for that is stubbed out for any future.
So you're suggesting the second?
Yeah, so the 1.8, I think it's like 1.449. You know, so really the difference is just, you know, kind of that, that column D. There are a little bit of differences, but that column D has utilities on there. So, you know, just kind of that, we're a main, main part of the difference.
I think I, President, we can ask you this question, but I hope it's you. All started along, you got the fall. Funding was in. You get the grain, what's the time schedule? What is accomplished for that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so obviously we have to go into the, to the city to get site plan approval, but the plans and that type of stuff, you know, there's a couple of weeks to kind of. But, but, yeah, then you just.
No, we can't, we didn't, we don't, because you have to.
But, yeah, we have to get this.
We just say, I'm wanting to do it. You don't have a vow. In time, that we get, no, we have a dollar, but we did. We go, we look at about five, six months and we start.
Okay.
But, yeah, but I mean, as far as.
So six months, get a shovel.
Six months? Yeah, probably another six, eight months. You know, just, it obviously the difference in, you know, on the utility side. They just have a little bit more certifications in that.
As it sits right now, the same as drainage?
Yeah.
It's level?
No, it's raining, which underages.
Yes, it does. It's a flat bowl. And see the view.
Surface drainage or do you have storm drain?
Hey, so currently, as it sits today, it's all surface drainage for the most part. I mean, there is some yard that we're sold for the, you know, under kind of field portion. But what we're looking at in this phase two portion, there's really not a lot of drainage, but if you see in the, there's not a lot of drainage because we planned to have different ways. So we only have basically kind of just two alcohol pipes we're installing.
And those three lakes service that live.
From there.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, you know, all that stuff, we've been kind of chipping away as we've been going through and, you know, but with this grand scheme, you know, in mind the whole time, hey, try to avoid having to do stuff and then tear it off for redoing twice and that.
Are the lakes still going to be accessible for 50?
We're talking about.
Well, thank you, Senator Lake. I think. It's just a couple of places with the insurance, they love seeing it. It's gonna be within the park and I think it would be a perfect spot to have. And, you know, it's all interconnected. It's a fish talking out of the line, so it's not, you have to cut it out. The only thing I would, I would add in the sense, it is later getting verification from dollars and what I, we had a good thought, we thought we had something before this was kind of been away and, but since it is being placed so far down and if it does get permanent. Like it did. Maybe we ought to do one of, maybe between the two entities, we put open the door of, not the roundhouse. But the entrances.
Yeah.
Into the park.
Yeah.
Pass the lights, so it opens out into the parking area with the gates so we can function from extended, or light to light. And at least that way, we can secure the park. We can open up people to go into, we can, we can put some inexpensive delineation that's to go from that here. And we might do that with some temporary things. At least people who think use the park. You know, we have access across.
Yeah, and that's not an issue really, kind of, hey, you know.
That's still, that's still gonna be.
It's not. Yeah, it's not insignificant, but it cuts down a lot of utility, a lot of stuff that, you know, will be, so.
Where don't stand for? People, city must be able to. Have, but it may have been, this is what I was told. You guys were going out for the throwdown, like everyone allowed to.
Correct. We applied for the product grant. It closed. It closes the end of September, but it, they don't do the flooring and award until spring and when the funding is available next this week. So similar to the appropriation, we'll all be advised when it's up and up.
Mary.
Which would be good.
Right, which would be.
Cover this company. Could you speak? Yeah. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Is my mic working?
And I followed guys. Lynn Waddell was not our last one. Lynn, Lynn, this is Andrew. And so I didn't know if everyone had met her, but I followed that. That's me and I handed off the rock and post. He's skating up with everybody.
I introduced myself to the previous council会议室.
Okay, cool. So one now, right around the same time with this, you know. Which was. Yeah. How much is the base?
The legal, we submitted the grant of thousands.
Great. The other questions?
The turf that you see there, is it good now for use? Is it, or is it spongy and, you know, can people walk on it?
Yeah, yeah, it can roll. Like see.
Right.
It's the guy that probably rolls.
Okay.
He had to roll it tight so that if you could have found it, if not, it's not right. So.
Right, right.
It's, it's impacting very much.
Okay, good. And the, who made games of, okay, for the maintenance.
City, this is you.
Okay. Right. Those are two of our city managers, Kevin and our buddy.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, it's, they're not sitting, but. It's all, it's all. I'm sorry, I just did sit, not sit.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, falling down the premises, so this time we see it as, okay, hey, we know what our numbers are to that first, to that second page, phase two, but if in a month or two, we get back, we get, we hear, okay, we're gonna have this, not like what we have now, it's easy to kind of like, hey, we need to back out this porch and do that. So, you know, for that type of stuff and getting site plan approval, like, you know, that's something maybe we'll have a discussion with the city staff is can we submit and get site plan approval on this with basic of just the entry roads and stuff like that? That way, you know, if we get it, then we can go out and big, actually, I don't know. I don't know. If the.
Yeah, can we do some? We'll see. And if we can, make sure I'm included on that.
Yeah.
This information actually would be very helpful in some discussions with the law. If I get it sent out.
Yeah, and I, what I.
They can change.
Yeah, and what I can do too is, we now, you know. Yeah, we were, we've been working on this thing. But I do have, I mean, kind of a full set of plans that I can send you all to that.
Yeah, you would send it to the entire council or maybe to our city manager, control distributed.
That would be the best.
If you'd send to the city clerk.
Very good. Any other questions for the city?
Well, just want to ask, I compliment, um, Barbara's question about looking at the budget. So when it comes to maintenance of, of any people's work, we do have in the city budget for treatment, or especially when it comes to special events. So there is, there is, there's, there is a small portion that we do have in order to maintain. Because special events, the, you know, the treatment for ants and anybody.
Speaking of that, I saw the, the 76th pop-up market. Against space getting mowed. We think to treat that for ants.
Do we know what Sid is charging for that maintenance?
That Sid does not charge us for making, it's, it, we pay a separate person for.
Okay, so that's good.
Correct.
They missed it. They not, they used one of our benefits.
Okay.
You just put out.
Right, right. Well, the whole point is, we know the right budget amount to cover the cost.
For, for the upcoming events?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Or for the ongoing maintenance of the grass.
We don't maintain the.
These are for special.
Just for a certain event.
Okay. Let it grow otherwise.
We don't know wrong, okay, but the, the whole problem, they maintained it's not sitting. But the special minister, what he can't have done is he got the privacy for ant-based application, so he, they had it on parade. Based on, you know. Also what they charged going and mowing and so on. If, if they're only mowing a piece every three months, you know, we get mowed right before an event. So he had, he built into the budget, the cost for mowing, the cost for ant-based application. Those were how he came up, as I was told. So there's no ongoing maintenance. It's kind of a one and done.
Okay. All right.
It's important to remember that until Sid goes away and the city takes over, Sid owns the district and has the ongoing maintenance. There will be like the preventative insect treatments that you do, that are done and paid for by the city for special events. But the regular mowings, that it doesn't become overgrowth and things like that, is Sid's responsibility and we have it in our budget.
Okay, I suppose we're gonna be, thanks.
Well, I hate to murder the water. But in this, in this particular case, all of the dollars were present, were built and made though. Which is where they all had, fuck, that's not Sid. That was not Sid in the game. So in this case, we'll see, either way, it's a, it's a, it's a, also, they also treat ants. It's just the.
And so the one that question, your new building, where's that relation to the park?
You weren't saying that?
Yes.
It's recommended, but just new to south and it's going.
Okay.
So if you go across that, any entrance that goes from, make a note, you sit right there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, the other, uh, council on this side of. We're going to forward the seminal improvement districts personnel services for special events. City manager.
You also will see this item at the regular council meeting. It is an interlocal agreement with similar improvement districts. We are in need to secure similar improvement district utility personnel services for this began with the holiday pop-up market that's happening this weekend, but also for any future events. Sid personnel, they help us greatly prior to an event for onsite coordination of activities, restroom deliveries, overview of field activities. And in the day of the event, helping with road closures, putting out signage, setting up various items, assisting with some of the vendors that need assistance with generators. And then post events, overseeing cleanup, overseeing the road and removal of signage. And so this is something I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention at, at this level, since we have similar competition with us. That legal has been reviewing a, in a local agreement that will come, come before you all at the regular council meeting.
Okay, great. Before you move on to comments, I just have some general Sid questions, if we could get kind of like a state of the union from Sid's perspective of where we are. How's, how's the infrastructure in terms of being built out percentage wise? Kind of where are you guys at, what Sid, in terms of the overall problem with the city? Anyone want to speak to everyone?
I'll let you speak to it.
So, as far along as we were, I think the last number, not below last, I think we did 70. We were at just under 80% of the structure for what's going on now. So we had a few developed, we'll come to the west, which is going to be potential. So we have, we don't, so we can, no, we can. So a lot of that's going to be their own understanding is that nothing to the west will be Sid's. Surviving, so he's not free to do that.
What do you mean to the west? The west of what?
To the west is the commercial.
Okay. Commercial and the solar farm.
That's correct. That's correct. So that's supposed to be my understanding. All private roads. So there will be Sid roads going to. So if that's, if that's the case outside of some lakes, some lake magnates do there, I would say that we're probably holding pretty close with our 80%. And same thing with the GL piece, if I understand. Till they start building, we don't know for sure, but that's all private. So there's, we're gonna be, we, I would say, we're, one of the factors, I'm about 80% with it. Land state. Red ones.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, experience right on, kind of.
And what's left to get into. What are we missing?
What we're gonna have.
It's a street.
We already, we've done some of it.
They're working on that. They're, they're working on, have you heard one they're actually gonna do up front?
I haven't heard of their, but I think in the next like week or so, all the infrastructure, the whole, we're gonna need suitable property, it should be done.
A bunch of this, Sid, I think, done, I'm not gonna sure about.
And that's not, we're not doing like Sid. That's utilities. Yeah, that, that, that's.
Yeah.
That's, you know, they just, they have taken from some of the district, because obviously those road crossings, stuff are crossing, you know, are aligned, everybody. Um, they have a set of property that they addition, they ease, so they pull and set up their own, it's completely there. So they, you know, start counting and stuff like that, they don't really, unfortunately having a out of control on it, we obviously, we're assuming that it's better, but from Sid's perspective, we, you know, if they say they want to stop, we don't really have any barriers to the head. We want to come down.
You, you inspected though, don't you?
We inspected, we only inspected it in the, from, from the point of view of, hey, this pole is going in, we have a lot of this right here. Or the places within the unit, but the actual, like that, that's what we're looking for in terms of. You know, we, we don't, you know, they, we're not permanent, you know, maybe they, they submitted appliance to it because of you know, the conflict with our utilities and our agents, but that's, that's, so we're doing our inspections in that, that we're doing in the next season.
So District Castle told me before beginning of summer, that that field working on is a street lighting, they'll have it done in three months. That's what they. Right, right. So why, why, why so?
I, we don't know. We've sent out, you know, hey, we wanted to, we didn't want to know, hey, this is type of a be done. And really this, within the past, I think, two or three weeks, so they're actually doing those radical waters and some, some of the property. It's kind of the first big movement that we've seen that they're, you know, ready to start.
We don't see them out there on the basis over the last six to nine months.
Yeah, and I, we don't know why and, you know. That's not.
Say it, you're filling a sign, you know, now meeting, so. We have one, we have like.
That's.
Let's give, let's give a little first one.
Let us know.
Yeah. He's a good guy.
I'm gonna be the one to go.
What's left to get into 80%? Did 80% net, what do we miss?
Mayor, take the other mic, please.
I, I can't, I'm swallowing the mic.
Whatever.
Um, we tell my mics.
Basically, for Sid, get done, you finish with something, but. I have some, I have more to do. But, you know, we're going to, we're going to get to a, we're going to get to ninety eight, that number. Ninety-five to ninety, even if it's some problems back now, but we're, we're, but Sid's.
What's the major stuff?
There's additional landscaping, we'll see, if you want to, going to the west, so that's, that would more than I could become Sid's responsibility. Um, so you can have landscape around that western portion, you can have the landscaping, additional stuff going from the south. East side over here with the DL, we go there, we had the work, the notes going on a lot for you. So one point, we're doing another interconnect currently, we're bringing in water and enforcement back in, in south side of one point, so you're making another. Getting, um, so that has to get completed. We've got a tent still, so tho, those are, those are the little bit of runway section that we're finishing up, house, parkways out, um, the north west, and thousands of cars southwest, that, that's a little bit looped in there. Um, we may have a little bit of work one across that now, but we're going to be shaving that to the west, western commercial center, for the solar. But, uh, that's not it. Uh, me, Sid, that's, that's actually probably, um, two, two miles of landscape out.
And now, in the last year or so, and correct me if I'm wrong, your budget has pretty much like doubled. Right?
With everything, yes.
So do you, you anticipate it kind of favoring right now and just quietly dipping up till you get to a hundred, or is it going to double again?
No, because we don't have any, we don't have any big amounts, so you have to, you have to realize you have everything going on in budgets as it comes online. So when they turn over a roadway section that we were expecting to be two years. When I help them get a one, or skip a year, I'll want to be organized.
Okay.
That's, that's what it's been, that's the big, both of that landscape.
Got it.
But I can look for you.
Does anybody have any questions before I open up the, or public comment?
Sixtieth East, was there anything there? Since it's in West, at seven.
Well, Sixtieth, the Sixtieth East, north, the landscape would come, if you go across the Hamlets, the Meadow, the Woodlands, all that, that's all, that's all we've done. That, so that, anything behind that would be counted, that would be better work. Um, but we do have Sixtieth, so, one forty, south of the Pines, the rest of that has to get, I see, that would, that's a mile. Thereabouts, and then we have roughly another mile, again, the landscape that's going to come back and cross to the west from the very southeast corner to the west to where the estates are currently, which would be that hole across the whole GL piece. All that has to get landscape fitted up, which is a, to be minimal, Dawn has a nice layout for that, it'll be a continuation of everything on that south side. But, um, it's still another piece that we have to, to maintain and mow.
Any other questions, public, public comment, councilman?
Yeah, the, for seven street lawsuit, will you give us, or do your attorneys give us some clear answers to why it's sticking to the lawn?
It's an appeal.
No. That's, if you want to answer, we have oral argument scheduled in January, so depending on how fast the appellate court exposes of it, we should know something, said hopefully in the spring.
Public comments? This is actually the agenda, allows for comments for the public to speak. These people will be given a total of three minutes to comment. The public comment card should have been completed, but it's okay if it wasn't. Um, we have called to speak, go to the podium, and prior to adjusting the council staging, then, for the revenue. We have any public comments? Bobby Farver, St. Armin's way. How are you, sir?
Very good. Um, I can just add to it, but clear up with that whole thing with street lighting. Um, after Ken left, or he said that in about three to four months, um, I had checked, went into what I said before, status sixty, which is kind of like a hole within wait. Um, I did talk with St. Pierre that some of the Sid meetings that I've been at, and, uh, yeah, I did have a little consciousness to take care of, but that's, as I know, um, standing aggressively speaking, drive and the whole Sid, um, we saw them out there today. Their trucks are out there, they are boring, they are putting in everything that they have for them. Um, Sid had to go out and their own is to go out, but we didn't, Sid was marked out until it was, because you can't be hitting water lines, gas line, anything like that. So they are out there, street lighting is out there today, they go, we never space about fifteen lights, I checked the other night, and there's more lights that have been fixed there. Um, also today, I absolutely had an absolute pleasure going out and spending a good part of the day with Scott Massey. And we went out, we got told a whole bunch of stuff about Wesley, the whole state system, all sorts of stuff. And we did go into the park, and I assure you that park is solid as rock. I mean, we drove it, there's no problem there. I think it'll take trucks, tractor trailers, and the many states, so it's, it'll be everyone's.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other public comment?
Luis Torres from World World. Hi, everybody, I'm Luisia Torres, five eight four seven, one one zero circle. Um, I have a lot of people here. Um, my, I know I suck, but I know I'm fine, and I did. Hi, Lynn, my name is Luisia Torres, I write a lot from the West Lake, Washington. Um, so I just have noticed that some of the signage around town, um, I have the, um, for the small businesses, I have some terrible papers taped into the ground, kind of proliferating, and typically, I feel like some people got blew after the. I just want to, I'm, I'm still waiting. Um, how much of the facility, the, the city facilities?
For any building?
The building.
Well, right, because what about, I mean, the, the building itself, there's a lot of probably, there's about to go on, and it's, uh, there's components to that, so we're, you know, kind of, kind of, what's.
Okay, and then, um, you know, how much is the crime building going to have these days?
You mean the.
Yeah.
Probably as soon as we step out of the door. They have to blow them, try to chew us on.
Oh, okay.
I think they had, I don't know, but that piece of property, they want to get it, though, thoughed out. Um, they're, they're already stamping fill up to the south of the, the level upside, so you have to.
Um, okay, um, two things, oh my gosh, can I just, you know, um, the traffic circle, you know, there's cars and running things about, traffic circle, even these, um, things. And I just wanted to say that if you go out there on a new moon night, it's very dark out there. And there really is minimalist signage and reflectors, you know, the opposite extreme to me is, um, this dribbling traffic circle out in the light zone, which is chaos, you know, but I wonder if we could just meet in the middle of it. Um, for example, I know there's only one entrance into the circle that actually has the traffic circle with the three arrows going around. Um, you know, there's no ballers, whatever those people are calling it, it's very little reflector. So I just, I think there's an improvement, something made there. Okay, last thing, um, someone, this is not my idea, it's on the floor. How about a single lane road from Seminole Ridge High School to Sycamore? That is only open in the morning of an entrance from Western Sycamore to the high school parking lot. And in the afternoon, at ten AM, going west from Sycamore, to divert some of the high school traffic on the way from Seminole Avenue.
North of West.
Uh, Sycamore?
Sycamore.
Yeah.
West.
The rest, where people live, that's true.
They'd have to go across.
They look like.
North of the. Arcana, or, or Mayan fault now, but east of the valley.
That one is flat.
Little more south. So if you're going west, you have to go across, or do that with.
So that would be.
Yeah. I know her, but that's okay, yeah, but I'm glad, and I want to be short about it, but that whole piece where you're talking, that's all the commercial center through there. That property, the kids are walking, they're preparing for us, there are kids off today, they're very blind about it, like I told you, but that's all private property. There's going to be a big facility of some sort built there.
Yeah.
So there, there really won't be, there's no place left, you know, in Sycamore, so that you know, as Sycamore comes crossing bins, there's nowhere for it to go there, I can just, you just back around the town, center park with us out.
Okay, yeah, I was just talking about the, the automobile traffic.
That's what I mean.
Right. And now.
Here are the public comments. Okay, there's no further business. I will adjourn at four forty-three PM. Thank you.